This regular city council meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order July 19th, 2021 at 7:01. Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could use a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Burns, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitehead, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. The consent agenda is just a list of items presented together without discussion. Any council member can ask to have one of the items voted on separately and discussed. A, regular city council meeting minutes of July 6th, 2021. B, special council meeting minutes, same date. C, Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission meeting minutes of May 13th. D, Special Planning Commission meeting minutes of June 29th. E, proposed payment application number one for the 2021 water main replacement project M 718. Finally, licenses new and renewals submitted for July 6th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Do we have elected officials who are here to speak tonight? Not tonight. Item six, we have some special presentations to recognize some people who went above and beyond during our COVID nightmare for the past year and a half. And we thought it would be nice to take some time to recognize them officially. So that's what we're doing this night. And City Manager Eric Tungate will explain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Is this, there we go. Okay. I want to thank you all for being here. And by the way, by no means do we think we are 100% of the way through the pandemic. But we've made a lot of ground up and we have so many people to thank. So many people in our community are heroes, quite honestly. Some of those heroes, we're going to be acknowledging tonight. So tonight, I'm honored to show our extreme gratitude and appreciation for the individuals, businesses, and organizations that stepped up to support the Oak Park community during the COVID pandemic. Those we are honoring tonight put their resources forward to help our residents during a time of uncertainty. Through the donations of PPE, food, and time to set up COVID testing and vaccine clinics, lives were saved. Imagine this, lives were saved through your efforts. So I would like, City Council members, if I could ask for you to stand up behind the participants this evening as I call their names, if you would come up. And then individually, if you would like to stand up here in the front and we can honor you. And then as a group at the end, I know there are quite a few of you here, we can all come up as a group and get a group photo. I'd like to start with Andrew Atisha. Andrew, good evening. Come on up. We're just going to stare at you uncomfortably for the next 15 minutes, if you don't mind. This gentleman is a hero during, and remember, you know, you have to go back. I find that we've got this drag on our memories. Because if you go back a year ago, the big battle was getting our hands on PPE. And this gentleman donated 1,000 masks to the city in April of 2020. And we provided these through our Economic Development Director, Kim Barone, to local businesses before we made it publicly available, but then we also made them publicly available. Thank you so much for your efforts. So much appreciated.
I think he wants to stand up, right?
Stand up.
Three months ago, this would have been a violation. Councilmembers, stay up. Okay. I would like to ask that Matt and Brian Louisa from Value Wholesale come and join me at the front. These gentlemen are heroes. They donated face shields to Oak Park Public Safety during the March and April timeframe. And again, hearken back to what was going on, we could not get our hands on these. So these gentlemen stepped up and saved us and our public safety officers. Thank you so much. Okay, where's Janay Scott? Janay, there she is. Okay. I am going to recognize Janay Scott individually, but I'm also going to go forward here. Could all of our Henry Ford Health System members please join me here at the front? Where do I start, Janay? So, Janay Scott and Henry Ford Health System, we have Tyler Prentice and John Zervos as well. So Janay and her team there, and these individuals stepped up in two ways during this whole thing. One was, in the very beginning, they said, hey, how about a testing facility? And the superintendent of our Oak Park District is here, and we both took advantage of this. We said, absolutely. Okay, then fast forward, I don't know how many months later, and Janay calls and says, hey, how about a vaccination clinic? And now remember, go back in time, time warp here, this was when nobody could get vaccinated. So here we were saying to our residents, come on in and we'll take your name down and we'll get you in. By the way, Janay also happens to be an Oak Park resident. And I have to say one more thing about Janay, as if I haven't embarrassed her enough, I'm going to continue. I said to her later on, after the clinic had been open, and it's still open every, every three weeks. Okay. And that's, we don't have an end date yet, right? Okay. So you can still sign up by going to?
OakParkMI.gov.
There we go. Okay. OakParkMI.gov, walk-ins is still available if you still want to get vaccinated. But I said to Janay towards the end of this, I said, do you realize that because you reached out, because you put your best foot forward, you have literally saved people's lives? And you should have seen the look on her face, like, oh, you know what? Literally saved people's lives solely because they had the opportunity to come to the clinic and get vaccinated at a time when those were very, very scarce. Thank you all so much for what you have done for this community and for our entire state and, of course, metro area. Thank you so much. I am, I'm also going to be talking about my older brother here tonight. And he's not here, he lives far away. But my older brother is the president and CEO of a company in the west side of Michigan. And during the time when, you know, PPE and hand sanitizer was scarce, he sent how many barrels of hand sanitizer to the city to disperse? How much was it? 50 gallons, okay. So I think we're still using this now. But I wanted to acknowledge him, even though he's not here and he is my big brother. I have to say thank you to him. And his company is Advanced Chemical Concepts. I would also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge our great relationship and partnership with our Oak Park Public School District. And we have our superintendent of Oak Park here, Dr. Jamie Hitchcock is here. And the partnership that we have with the school district, there's primarily because they're right across, the high school's right across the street, is really amazing. And it has led to so many breakthroughs. You know, we're sharing space for our farmer's market now and other things like this. But there was a point when, here again, we were sort of like lifeline, we need your help and vice versa. And I just want to thank you for the incredible partnership, not just with the testing and the vaccination clinic, but also with the weekly food drive for all the support that you've given us. Thank you so much.
You know, I want to take this opportunity to thank a few people as well. So I appreciate the city offering me this opportunity to speak this evening. First of all, I have to thank our mayor. She has been so welcoming, supportive, and just jumped in in ways that you can't imagine. From supporting the bond and assisting with that, to reading to students, it's limitless in terms of her support. So we truly appreciate that. As well as City Manager Tungate and the city council, as well as the whole city of Oak Park. Really, I feel like we're an extended family. I can pick up the phone, anytime I call, they're willing to jump in and help us in any way possible. So thank you so much. On behalf of our Board of Education, students, staff, and families, I would also like to highlight Janay Scott as well as Henry Ford Health Systems. I cannot say enough about this wonderful organization. And at that time, where there were so many really difficult things that we were experiencing as a school district and a community, it's like they just fell from the sky, an angel, to provide so much support in terms of testing and vaccinations and lent time to sit on panels, to speak to our staff, to ease their nerves about returning to the classroom. So we thank you so much, Henry Ford, as well as Janay. And to our food service contractor, Chart Wells, they have provided probably a quarter of a million meals to families throughout the community. So students, as well as community members and individuals from all around the area. So thank you. Gleaners has provided a tremendous amount of support for our families as well. And if any of you have seen our families lined up on Wednesdays in particular, you know how much their support really does count and has made an impact on our community. Ascension Providence, they have also provided additional support. They turned around in a matter of days, virtual medical and mental health care for all of our students and families. And we can't thank them enough for that. United Way, as well as community member Gary Torgo and TCF Bank for providing financial support at the onset of the pandemic for Chromebooks, as well as hotspots for students. And FedEx, who courageously got out and delivered all of the Chromebooks and hotspots to our families in 100 different zip codes. We have students that attend our school from 100 different zip codes. And they really made the commitment to make sure that our students had the ability to learn through receiving electronic devices. I would also like to thank our Board of Education, and I see one of our board trustees here in the audience, Don Corperin. We appreciate our Board of Education for their support. So I'd like to thank President Hoida, as well as all board trustees for their ongoing support and commitment to doing what's in the best interest of our students and families. So again, thank you for this opportunity. I definitely feel like I should pay it forward. There are so many people here that really pitched in and made a tremendous difference and saved lives. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
So I would like to ask the members of Forgotten Harvest to join me in the front, please. Hiding in the back, Ann. Come on up here. Come on. We have CEO Kirk Mase and staff. And I have to say, one of the, you know, actually a continuing theme of heroism with Forgotten Harvest, and by the way, they're staying in Oak Park, let's start there, so. They're building their new headquarters on Eight Mile Road. It's currently under construction. If you've wondered what that building going up is, here you are. We're very proud to keep you. During the pandemic and before and will occur after, Forgotten Harvest has stepped up and continued to take on food insecurity in our city and in our region. And especially during the pandemic. I mean, we saw the lines of people waiting to access the food lines here. And I believe we're continuing to do that. For how long are we doing that here at the community center? Forevermore if we can, okay, deal. And I think that the need, the continuing need, especially during the pandemic, that you folks meet and exceed on a daily basis is unrivaled. It is just, it's awe inspiring, the way that you help our community and others in the metropolitan area. So I want to thank you. You are all our heroes. Thank you so much for what you've done throughout. And we have plaques for you.
I don't have much to say. I know there's a lot of business left to get done. I just want to say how much of an honor it is for the Forgotten Harvest team to serve in Oak Park. We realize 100% that we're one part of a machine that has to work for people. And we also realize we're only one small part of it at the end of the day. It's been a pleasure to step up in a time like this and add value to our community. Today, I'm a hero representative. The team that's here really represents the on-the-ground, everyday force that made it happen for us. Just a small part of what made it happen for us. You know, it's easy for us to pick on each other when things are going well. But when everybody's afraid, when nobody really has to get up and do anything because we got the permission to step back into our own little holes and be afraid. There are people who stepped up and left out their beds and left their families and put their grieving to the side to come and do their job for our community. And I just want to say, it's an honor to be here to not only be a representative of these incredible people in our team, but also just to recognize that it took a lot for all of us to be able to do our part in an unconventional time. for all of us to be able to do our part in an unconventional time. So I just want to say thank you to everyone, thank you to City Council, thank you Mayor to your leadership for allowing us to be who we are, and to be the full Forgotten Harvest that we're trying to be. We're just trying to be the best Forgotten Harvest we can be for our community, and we're getting there every day. Thank you again.
Move the chairs back, do they stand in front of the chairs? Move the chairs back and stand in front of the chairs. Come down this way a little bit, as I'm looking over there. Center ourselves on the.
I'm going further away.
Which one? Got to put a tall one behind him, huh? That's it. You are fine, you are fine, you always look fine.
Yep, it's up to 379.
Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your efforts to support the Oak Park community during this time. Donations and the access to a vaccine clinic helped hundreds, if not thousands, but there were still so many unfortunate losses. So while we cannot bring back those who lost their lives to COVID-19, we can ensure their memory lives on. I'm going to be asking our City Council to create a COVID permanent memorial here in the city to remember those who died from this terrible disease, to ensure we give each life the honor and recognition it deserves. We want to create a memorial here at the city that embodies everyone's spirit, along with the spirit of the Oak Park community. This is where your input becomes vital. And soon, we're going to provide access as long as City Council gives us the go-ahead to allow ideas to be submitted to the city for this permanent memorial. And once this document goes live, we're not ready yet, but once it goes live, it will be announced across our communication channels. And again, at this point, your input is welcomed and encouraged. Thank you so much to our heroes, and thank you so much for every member of our community who stepped up during this time. Thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful moment. It's good just to all be together in one room amazingly breathing. Something we took for granted and then during COVID learned not to take for granted. It's good to be back. And I hope that everyone who has not yet been vaccinated will consider doing that to stay safe. When I met with Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence, that was her prime focus, is getting the rest of us vaccinated. Mayor Duggan had done a wonderful job in Detroit making vaccines available, but I was shocked to learn that the total number vaccinated in Oak Park is 30% of the residents. And I had hoped it was going to be higher. And I don't have a number for Oak Park, but I know that there's more to be done. And we can do it. We are now at item seven on the agenda, which is a public hearing for the tavern license application for Berkeley Coffee Limited, 14661 West 11 Mile, Suite 500. So I will now declare the public hearing open. And the people that we need to hear from would be first is the owner of the, please come up and introduce yourself and tell us what your vision is and how far you are along on it.
Hello, everybody. My name's Ken, owner of Berkeley Coffee, as was mentioned here. I've been a resident of Berkeley for the last 13 years or so, and business owner as well. We've had offices in Southfield, Clauston, and now currently Royal Oak. I'm kind of trying to settle my time out of that company and transition to a new lifestyle that's more locally oriented, hence Berkeley Coffee. This is a coffee shop and roastery at the core. I've been a home roaster for a number of years and I'm stepping it up now. But it's also a really progressive place in that we're going to have a non-alcoholic bar. Not sure if you guys have heard much about this trend that's going on, but it's more movement than a trend, really. Kind of underserved population of people who are interested in a different night scene. I'm not averse to alcohol, like it plenty myself, to be honest, but I do desire some balance. So coffee shop and bars in general is a common trend these days that is growing, I think. It's a logical combination, morning and night. Non-alcoholic bars, not so common. It's a gray area as well, so getting a tavern license to serve non-alcoholic beverages, it's a bit odd, but it's necessary for logistical reasons primarily. The distribution channels for a lot of these products that I need to serve are through traditionally alcoholic providers in order to buy from them. They can't sell to me or they won't sell to me, you know, unless I'm a licensee. It also gives me some comfort having a license in case anybody is just uncomfortable in general that I'm serving mocktails or sober beverages, or whatever you want to call them. Non-alcoholic beer, wine, cocktails, that's what we're going to be, it's a bar. We also have live music events. I hope that it's going to become a community fixture in general. I've been traveling for a number of years, I've been able to experience a lot of different coffee bars, what have you, around the world. So I'm looking forward to bringing some of what I've seen and experienced back here. I live right in 11 Mile, and already people are asking me questions about, you know, why is it called Berkeley Coffee, you're in Oak Park? That's true, it started in my garage in Berkeley, that's why. I'm going to make some t-shirts that joke about fact, I'll make some coffee blends that are, you know, Berkeley-Oak Park blend, or 11 Mile blend, something like that. Yeah, so I'm more than happy to answer any questions about what I'm doing, what my background is, anything. I'm good at math, if you've got any.
So what business were you in before this?
I'm still a 3% owner of a software development company. About a year ago, I was 20% or about that. We've got three offices, Orlando, one near London, UK, and then one here that I helped start several years back in Southfield. We're now in Royal Oak, and we do, they do, I should get used to that, they do, a lot of video systems that are for large entertainment venues like theme parks, like if you've ever been to Harry Potter World or anything like that where there's these very large theme park screens, we make specialty players for that. So that's allowed me to afford this venture, the company buying back my ownership for the most part, with just a little bit of skin in the game left over for me to hopefully keep making some funds of.
Very nice. I was going to say, you get my vote if you can think of a way to put Oak Park in one of your drinks or on your menu somewhere, but I think the t-shirts and the Oak Park-Berkley blend is going to do it for me.
I'm really excited because Berkeley's a great community, Oak Park has such a variety of people. I'm really excited to see who comes through the door. Yeah, I hope so. Any other questions about what we're doing, why? Sure. We'll have to follow legal guidelines, of course, and just not legal, ethical. I'm concerned about everybody's safety, too. We're going to have a vaccinated policy, if you're vaccinated, mask, no mask is okay. I think it's a changing field, so it's hard to say, especially with the way things may revert here with the variations that are happening. So I think it's a moving target, but definitely on my radar since the beginning. It was a risk to start investing in a building, a lot of investment when not knowing when it's time to open, will I be able to have people in the door? So I'm very aware and very cautious. We'll have limited occupancy if need be. Beyond that, I think I just got to keep an eye on things for the next, September is when we're targeted to open right now.
Might I ask you what your timeline for opening, when can I first come in and get my cup of coffee?
The public goal is the first of September, but if you really want coffee, just give me a call and I'll drop off a bag.
Anyone on council have a question? Yes, ma'am.
A mocktail? That's a touchy subject, because mocktail makes it sound like it's a lesser drink or a copy. So I'm really interested in seeing a kind of sea change in the way people look at beverages and nighttime entertainment in general, or daytime for that matter. It's always boggled my mind that so many adult beverages have to be alcohol. It's just kind of unfair, they kind of own the situation. There are, you should have a look online, the products that are coming out in non-alcoholic beer even, non-alcoholic wines, spirits, it's pretty exciting. There's so many, like, I was in New York last week doing some market research essentially. There are full non-alcoholic bars there, there are several bars that have grown really recently because of Dry January, I don't know if you've heard of that, that was a big push. A lot of the high-end cocktail bars have several non-alcoholic options right now that are not just some fruit and some mint, maybe some ginger beer thrown together. That's what I think of as a mocktail traditionally, is we need something for that guy, or that girl who's there who needs something. It's different now. There's actually a growing population of people who want a very well put together drink, a thoughtful drink that's not just something for that lady who's here.
So you allow children to come in though, right? Even though it looks like it's a bar and you sell alcohol?
That is something I want to be careful of, too. I don't want to be a training bar, or a, you know, candy cigarettes type, training cigarettes type situation. A lot of the drinks on the menu are going to be 21 and older, whether it's legally necessary or not, anything that would truly be a mocktail, so something that says rum or says vodka alternative even, or non-alcoholic beers legally I can't furnish to anyone who's a minor. I'm going to take those things very seriously because I don't want to get that reputation, I don't want to be the kid bar. It is all ages. I think there'll be certain evenings, maybe we have special nights that are 21 and older, or music events that are, whether it's because we think it's appropriate only for adults or because the musician or performer has required it in order to perform there. There may be certain situations where it's definitely 21 or 18 plus, but in general, we want to be a family-friendly place. I think it's a bad stigma that the word bar or nightlife in general has to be so adult, but it's a careful line to walk, for sure, and I'm going to walk it carefully.
City Manager Tungay.
Thank you, by the way, thank you for doing business in our city. I want to clarify something, so as we looked at your application for tavern license, you're not serving alcoholic beverages, you're serving non-alcoholic beverages, but because there is a little bit of alcohol in non-alcoholic beverages, the statute requires you to get a tavern license, correct?
I can legally serve everything without a tavern license, because it's all legally non-alcoholic, less than 0.5% ethanol content. Problem is, I can't buy a lot of these products without a tavern license. So it's an odd transition time, I think, right now. It may change in the future, we'll see, but.
It's exciting to have something new in the city.
It is, it's progressive and it's kind of fun to be part of a pioneering thing, yeah.
Thank you so much. Anybody from the city want to ask a question? Yeah, in the back. Mr. Sherman.
Good evening, Ken Sherman on Jeromeal Park. I wasn't planning to ask any questions about this, but I guess I'm a little concerned that this is probably like the fourth or fifth tavern license that you're handing out for a business on 11 Mile, where it seems like, excuse me, you're, you know, kind of enassing all the tavern businesses with the exception of, I think, Sahara Restaurant on 11 Mile, and I wondered why that is. Why don't we look at the city as a whole and say 9 Mile or another location other than 11 Mile? Because this adds to, you talked previously about having a special cup night for, you know, that part of the city, so this adds another business, not that I'm opposed to, you know, a new business, but I just wondered why 11 Mile, since there's like, you know, places that are already open and about to open, you know, within a store or two of one another, doesn't really make a lot of sense.
Makes an exciting area. Makes for an exciting area that's going to attract people. The other thing is, we're working on 9 Mile on the east side, then we're working on, so things are coming on 9 Mile Road, probably going to, Primo is probably going to wind up being something that might interest you on 9 Mile, and that will attract other businesses to 9 Mile.
It kind of reminds me of having public storage companies en masse in the city, you know, that you are just putting, you know, one particular type of business in one part of the city, which, you know, from a business development perspective, you know, I don't really see why it needs to be within a store or two of other businesses that are, you know. you know, have a tavern license. And what's to prevent this business, since he has a tavern license, from going from what he's gonna open up to serving hard liquor and beer? He doesn't have to come before you if he's already been granted a tavern license. And you only have a limited number of tavern licenses for a city, I believe, that you can give out, correct?
Yes, there are a limited amount, and I believe our, at last count, we have around 20 or so still available. I wanted to just respond to something you mentioned about Eleven Mile Road. So, we're happy as can be that Eleven Mile Road is being developed. It's fantastic for the city. But we don't engineer, you know, we don't say to private business owners who are gonna open up in our city, "Hey, you have to open up here."
I understand that.
They tell us where they wanna open up. Our objective is very simple, which is, we wanna make sure that every commercial property in the city is serving a useful purpose and generating foot traffic, as we're seeing on Eleven Mile, of course.
But I guess as a resident, I'm looking at the big picture, thinking, "Well, how come there's not such a similar place by me? I live closer to Oak Park Boulevard, Nine or Ten Mile." And, you know, what's there?
Just be patient. We're working on it, at all times.
Just one response. I totally understand your position. One thing I will say, though, is, this is logistically like bars and such, but this is a really unique place. There's not another place like this within 1,000 miles. So I think, try to look at it that way. This, I can't speak for all businesses, but I'm interested in doing something different that can attract more people to the area. I think that clump of businesses right there on Eleven Mile, Randolph Building is where I'm at. There's the brewery next door, and to-be-determined business to the west of us. Maybe two or three businesses, we'll see. Couple breweries down the street, and a market opening up. I agree, it's definitely becoming a district of sorts, and I think that's the way you've hoped it'd turn out. They're opening a social district, which is very exciting. I think it is something to be excited about, and I'm glad to be a part of it. And I hope that the same thing can happen all around town and other districts, too.
Any further public comment? Yes, sir. Steve Gold.
Right, Steve Gold, Oak Park, Michigan. There used to be a place called The Raven Gallery, which was worldwide famous. It was a folk place. It was on Greenfield, on Eleven Mile Road. I'm sorry, a little bit north of. Then it became a restaurant, and then finally left. I used to love that place because it was a non-alcoholic coffee house. Not only they had live music, they had drinks, all sorts of wonderful non-alcoholic drinks. Not just, you know, pop soda or something like that. So I'm really excited by what you're talking about, and all I can say is, from my point of view, welcome. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that. To your point, our menu, I think, you'll find really interesting, because it's coffee at the core. And coffee is local, but it's also very globally oriented, focused on the origins and the quality of life of the farmers, where the stuff came from. We're doing a cacao menu after that, which is not something anybody else does either, so specializing in cacao's from around the world. And then there's gonna be a water section that focuses on, you know, appreciation of water. Kind of the opposite of a bar. So, that's it for me, unless any other...
Sounds fascinating. And one more public comment. If you come up to the mic and give us your name. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council. Dawn Corpren, Oak Park Pearson. I just had one question. Would there be any vegan coffee?
So coffee, just coffee is inherently vegan, but milk is often a really common match, yes. We've got oat milk, at the least. I'm also working on some almond milk options. And a lot of the, like I was saying, the chocolates. It's getting really popular for those to be made with oat milk or almond milk instead of milk chocolate as well. So yeah, all over the menu, I think, almost every category of the menu, there's something that'll suit. Gluten-free, vegan, you name it, designation, organic, et cetera. New Milk, that sounds like an alternative milk.
Yeah.
No, I didn't hear about that.
It's actually just on Shark Tank.
Ah, cool.
It was somebody who grew up across the street from me, former Oak Park resident. I retold one.
Good to know.
New Milk makes, they make fresh plant-based milk in the store.
Good to know.
Very interesting thing.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Juan Jerome Muscini, City of Oak Park. What employment opportunities is your new venture bringing to the community? And especially for the young people?
So like I said, one thing I am doing is trying to hire older people. Coffee shops traditionally, I think, will do a lot of part-time, and a lot of high school, college. College-age, I could probably work with, but given the bar nature, I'm trying to stay 18-plus, ideally 21-plus, but, you know, we'll see who comes through the door for a job. From day one, I'm not gonna be a regular employee. I'm gonna employ full-time people, management, full-time general food staff, and several part-time people. Another angle of the business will be the music events, or events in general. I'm trying to get involved with some artists, to bring in and show things that they've designed. I'm also employing some artists currently to help me with interior design. Oak Park resident called Joey Solomon's doing a mural for me in there. But the events in general, we're recurringly bringing in people who want some evening or weekend work, or what have you, for lights and sound, and things like that.
The most exciting public hearing we've ever had. Thank you for your input. If there's no further comments from the audience, I will close the public hearing. And that brings us to the section where City Council is requested to approve the tavern license application for Berkeley Coffee Limited, 14661 West Eleven Mile, Suite 500. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
That's for Radner and Mayor Proten. Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
I was ready to vote yes before the hearing even started. There's nothing quite like a good, strong mocktail and some non-alcoholic beer at the end of a long, hard day. Said not me, ever.
Coffee, coffee, that's what...
But like you said, different strokes for different folks, so...
That's right. Oh, cute. Any other comments after that very astute comment from... No. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Member Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Monanously, we welcome you to the City of Oak Park, and I can't wait to...
First team.
You'd do well under cross-examination, by the way.
Sir, Councilmember is in trouble. All right, moving on. Special licenses, fun time. Request for special event license and waiver of fee submitted by Stantel Dickow, 10450 Albany Street, for the Albany Block Party to be held August 14, 2021. I think it is the second name here. Is anyone here from there, Pro? Okay. Is there a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Is there a second?
Julie.
Julie, uh, Julie Edgar. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Request for special event license, and submitted by Dog and Pony Show Brewing, 14661 West Eleven Mile, Suite 200, for the Berkeley Dad's Club Cornhole Tournament, to be held August 15, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proten and Councilmember...
Whatever.
Whatever. Radner, I keep wanting to call him Solomon. He just won't come out. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. No communications, down to item nine. Request for special event license, nope.
We just did that.
Top 10, counting with four.
Ripping through this time.
Accounting reports, aha. Approval for payment of invoices submitted by Gary L. Condo RPC for legal services in a total amount of $12,000, $245.79. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proten, Councilmember Radner. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And Mayor Proten Burns?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are down to the City Attorney section.
Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On June 28, 2021, the city received an application by Level 3 Communications for a Metro Act permit in the City of Oak Park for access to and ongoing use of public right-of-way within the city for the purpose of maintaining infrastructure to provide a full range of local and long-distance video, voice, data, and IP services over telecommunications facilities. Level 3 Communications submitted this application and proposed permit, along with the required $500 one-time application fee. The applicable statute requires the city to approve or deny access to the permit within 45 days from the data provider files an application for a permit. The City Attorney's Office has undertaken a review of the Level 3 Communications submissions to ensure that they meet the statutory requirements of Public Act Number 48 of 2002, as well as the City of Oak Park Code of Ordinances, Chapter 71, regarding telecommunications services. The application states that Level 3 Communications will install and maintain fiber optic cables throughout the use of existing conduit systems where available, and through construction of new conduit systems when necessary. Underground conduits will be placed in the public right-of-way. Level 3 Communications facilities will be installed in locations as identified in the route map attached to the application. The Department of Technical and Planning has reviewed the route map and notes that prior to construction, detailed plans will have to be submitted for right-of-way approval. Level 3 Communications will be required to present a certificate of insurance covering the proposed work, which names the city as an additional insured as required by state law and local ordinance. The permit is requested for a term of 15 years. However, the city ordinance allows only a term of five years, which is consistent with state law. As the documents submitted by Level 3 Communications comply with the statutory requirements, the City Attorney recommends approval of their application for a five-year permit, conditioned upon submission of the required proof of insurance. The attached proposed resolution approving the application along with a copy of the application is enclosed in your council packets for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. So we are ready for a resolution approving Metro Act permit application submitted by Level 3 Communications Limited. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Radner, in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mayor Proten Burns. I have a couple of questions. They said something about underground. Is this going underground? Are we digging up grass or concrete to do this?
They are using existing easements where lines already exist. So they're going to be using existing spaces and/or replacing existing cables.
So, it's possible, but they're not doing it?
It's possible they will need to lay new cables, but they are going to be using existing easements.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the initial contract was for 15 years, but we only said we'd do it for five. Is that correct, or...?
That's correct. That is what we are limited to by ordinance and also consistent with state law.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what Level 3 is? Do they contract with bigger telecom companies, like AT&amp;T? I mean, are they a subcontractor? Do they actually provide a service? Or they're just laying the, by the cable?
They're responsible for laying the infrastructure that supports other providers' networks in the city.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proten?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. City Manager Eric Tungay, you only have one item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Before I go through that one item, and by the way, I'd like to ask Director Robert Barrett, please join me at the podium. I'd like to mention, you may be wondering why the community and event update is not on the agenda. We will be placing that on one agenda per month going forward. It's just a lot of information at every meeting, so just for people's sake of time. So, with that said, 14A, Director Robert Barrett, please.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is proposed change order number three and payment application number five, final, for the 2018 Parks, Pocket Parks Construction Project 689. Proposed change order is for additional wiring for a separate circuit at the streetlights. This project added Pocket Parks at the intersections of both Seneca and Sherman, and at Nine Mile, this project is approximately 100% complete. I should say not approximately, it is complete. Now, this is the final payment. It is recommended that change order number three for the 2018 Pocket Park Construction be approved to Warren Contractors, and Shelby Township for the amount of $3,217.20. It's further recommended that the payment application number five, final, for the same be approved for the amount of $13,217.20. Funding is available from the Major Street Fund, Oakland County Grant, and tax foreclosure revenue for this expenditure.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Councilmember Radner and Mayor Proten Burns, thank you. I, so this was wiring that we didn't know we needed at those parks?
The change order is for, we had wiring there for a single circuit where you could plug in for events on the streetlight poles that are at the parks, but that was connected to the streetlight, which has a dusted-on sensor on there. So once we had that all set up, we just figured out we needed a separate circuit to run for that.
Yep, thank you. Any questions? Nope, ready for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Motion passes, and thank you, City Manager and Director Barrett.
Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the City Manager Report for this evening. I just wanna say one reminder, which is, we have a water and sewer utility bill town hall this evening, right prior to the regular council meeting. We're gonna also have our next one on August, I think, 16th, at 5:30, right here in this room. There will be a link set up for the one we had tonight. If you missed it and you wanna see it, please go to our website, and I know our other communication channels will have it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job. It was a difficult, complex subject that caring, competent, knowledgeable people presented reasonably so that we could understand it. It was a beautifully done job. Call to the audience. Please give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Steve Gold, 15,000 Leslie Street, Oak Park. Couple quick things. I'm sorry that Forgotten Harvest and School Superintendent left, because I wanted to point out that Forgotten Harvest was founded in Oak Park by Nancy Fishman, who was one of my classmates from Oak Park High School. And that's, you know, it would've been, we should be extra proud of Forgotten Harvest. It was an Oak Parker who founded them, graduated Oak Park High School. Next, I would like to make a request that we broadcast the special council sessions. You know, we broadcast the City Council sessions, and I can watch them later on, and replay or not, but when there is a special session for a City Council that takes place before, it is not broadcast, it is not recorded. So I would like to ask that you consider changing that policy now. Of course, I do know that there are times you're in closed session, but that could easily be edited out, or something like that. My third item goes back to... My third item, uh, goes back to water. Uh, for the least fifteen years, I've been using the ACH, uh, payment system, where I gave them, fifteen years ago, I gave them a blank check and every, you know, every quarter, I get the payment. I never worry about processing charges, may, if they lost in the mail or anything else like that. But I don't think we've really changed our procedure for setting it up. I'm hearing this from residents on social media, and they're saying, well, why do I need to send them a check to set this up? Or why do I need to go to City Hall? Or something like that. So, um, I think, I'd like us to take a look at that process and simplify it because even the IRS no longer requires that you provide them a deposit slip or anything else to, to set up ACH, uh, deposits or withdrawals from them. Same thing for the state of Michigan. So I would like to request that we take a look at that process and see what we can do to simplify it because so many people complain about, uh, the payments, you know, missing them online. The payment fee for credit cards, the, the fact it gets lost. If you have your bank set up for automatic bill payment, that's not the same thing. The bank generates a check and mails it. That check can get lost in the mail. It can be delayed, and then you get hit with a late fee. So I really want to encourage automatic clearinghouse ACH debits, but let's do whatever we can to make it easier to set it up. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Donald Jones. Uh, this is a call to the council and staff and the public. We've heard of Friends of the Public Library. We've heard the Friends of, uh, Central Park. And so I've got the brilliant idea there should be Friends of Shepherd Park. And so I'm inviting everybody to join, um, the Facebook group that I set up, and we'll see if there's enough interest to really go forward and, uh, kind of fill in the extra ten percent that, uh, Parks and Rec can't do with, uh, Shepherd Park because it's a, quite a asset already. And, um, the more people that care about it, the better it'll be. So if you are on Facebook, Friends of Shepherd Park is a Facebook group. Find it, like it, bug me. If not, see me afterwards. I'll get your name and I'll keep track of you. Thank you.
I think Friends of Palmer Park, turn back, please, just totally around.
Yep, and, um, up in Beverly Hills, too. Fuck.
Hi.
Thank you.
My name is Shayna Cook Hammer. I'm a resident of Oak Park, two four, six hundred, Bridgedale. And I wanted to bring to attention that there's been quite a few car accidents on the corner of my street. Because as soon as people come off of Coolidge and they're making that right turn, it's just only two yield signs. And they blow through them. And about a week ago, on a Sunday, there was an accident that involved a mother with both of her children in the car. And, um, the son got injured. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that it's been quite a few. Uh, last summer, there was one accident. And then, uh, my husband's car got hit twice from other cars just coming off of Coolidge and not slowing down. So maybe there could be a speed bump or stop sign implemented or something because it's starting to become a problem.
I don't know if you're aware of that. There are issues like that, Council, Toronto Commission, and the Safety Commission, and they take those kinds of, um, so investigate.
Okay.
A, um, street safety commission. And, um, you can look it up on Facebook. I think they have a page. You can contact me after the meeting and I'll get you hooked up with them. And, uh, that would be a great place to start with that kind of an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, um, my husband owns a business on Nine Mile, and it's, um, ten three three two on Nine Mile. And his garbage, I don't know who to complain to, but we have complained to the garbage, um, for them to pick it up, and they have not been picking it up. They say he was off the list, and then they said he was on the list. And it's been getting missed. Um, it's happened twice.
Talk, be, when you're off the mic, talk to that gentleman in the blue tie.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening again. Juan Jerome Shenny, two one nine forty-one, Whitmore, Oak Park, Michigan. I have a question about, um, the fences for the residential yards. The, I was raised in Oak Park, and the fences are the same. As now, being a homeowner, my issue is, and I think I've talked to Technical Planning several times about this because I get fines all the time, and, um, none of my neighbors seem to get these fines. I don't understand it. But the trees or the weeds or whatever are growing through these, like, I have an issue. I'm in the middle, and my two neighbors let their greenery from their shrubs go in through the fences they're growing. And I pay several times through the summer to cut it down, to keep down bugs, and to enjoy my backyard. And I've been, I've asked several times, you know, how do I get some kind of compensation or some kind of help with it? Because it's their shrubbery, but it's coming through my fence. And if they don't take care of it, then I'm stuck with looking at it and dealing with it. So how? I've gotten nowhere at Technical and Planning about it. And now there's a tree that seems to have, I, at one time, DTE used to cut the trees. I don't know, I don't do it anymore, but there's a tree, from what I understood when I was growing up, if the pole was on your side of the yard, that's your responsibility. If the pole is on the other side, that's their, their responsibility. If that's, is, is that not still the same?
Your fence line you can cut.
Okay.
See, that's from English common law, I was told, from law.
I, I understand that I can cut it, but my, my issue is having to keep cutting their trees that constantly overgrow.
Please talk to the gentleman back there in the blue tie.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Um, Mr. Tett, uh, Toogate. I wasn't aware of the meeting prior to this in regards to the water bill. So I'll talk to you later about that because I would have been the first one in the door. Hearing some of the residents, uh, this evening, I have a couple of issues before I get into the water bill. One mentioned about, uh, vehicles with accidents. I haven't seen an accident on my street on Condon, two three five three zero Condon. However, every day, I'm hearing lau-, uh, loud sounds from a particular, uh, vehicle going too fast. Uh, it's not a freeway. We have children, we have animals that cross the street. I'm afraid something might happen before someone do, do anything about it. So it goes on all the time. They're coming from the north side of Condon, uh, uh, before Oak Park Boulevard and cross Oak Park Bu- Boulevard. I don't know why they make it such a, you know, a thorough, a through street, street where they just go back and forth. You know, I'm wondering.
That one, you can ask, um, public safety. You can give them the area and the problem. And it's very helpful for them if you can give them a certain time. Like, is it three in the afternoon? Or is it usually between nine and eleven?
Time, sleep time, you name it. They're out there.
But like, when would they be most likely to find?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll let them know. But I had requested, uh, a, a couple of years for, uh, uh, what you call that speed, the speed trap or whatever, and I didn't get it. When I had a block club on that street, I, you know, I would get it from the prior, uh, community liaison. Well, not prior one, years ago. But anyway, so, uh, nevertheless, I would like to have that on the street if possible. We have the neighborhood watch thing that we got years ago. So I'm gonna move on to, uh, another situation about the trimming of the branches and stuff on the fences. Been there, done that. Paid somebody who ripped me off over two thousand dollars. I'm currently, uh, ha, submitted, um, so, they call tr- uh, tree, uh, Tree Man Tree Services. And they're located in Sterling Heights. They came over in Oak Park, and I happened to so, see them on Scotia because they know they're, it, it possibly be a lot of money for them because of all those bushes or whatever. He, he destroyed my yard. And next door to me, they're, uh, they're trying to sell their house, and my yard looks horrific what they had done to me. So I filed a complaint with the, uh, um, the State Attorney General, Nessel. I have not heard anything yet, but they did receive my complaint. So, so two people here, the residents here, we have a common, uh, issue that's going on. Moving forward, um, the water bill, Mr. Toongate, I was forced to sign it even though I disagreed on, you know, the payment plan because my bill is seventeen hundred dollars. So I disagreed on that. So I, I, um, but I was forced to sign because the ultimate was I was gonna get shut off. I have medical issues. I'm a senior citizen, and I disagreed that they claimed they found something in the toilet was running, but I didn't hear anything and didn't see it either. Uh, the person who came from the city is not a plumber. He works for the city. So I wish you had let me know that you, that there was a scheduled meeting prior to this one. And, and let me end this here. To, to change, we can make. Let me, we, no change can be made if everything remains the same. And I hope things are changed in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-two. We got COVID nineteen still here, and I wish you all be open more to the people who pay taxes here instead of people that you work with every day. Thank you. All I got papers too of my yard. Who'd I talk to about it?
The gentleman right there.
Daily. Anybody else? Can still go to the city website and make an appointment to do that, please. Now, I think we are getting children twelve, twelve and older. And, um, I know my daughter-in-law can't wait until it's babies to twelve years old because she's still scared like we were before we got our COVID shots. Uh, anybody that you know, if you can convince them to do it, please do it. It would be a public service and, um, and a mitzvah. Our, I'm a member of the Traffic Safety Board. No, try again. Corridor Improvement Board. And, um, we have been so busy. It has been just joyful to come to those meetings. Uh, we finally had one in person and, just like tonight, couldn't stop talking. Just, uh, um, what we, uh, found was we've got the city divided into districts, and one of them is where the coffee shop is. And, um, a possible name for it is the Water Tower District because.
And then, um, lots of ideas for the part of Nine Mile that we've been working on. Lots of ideas have been suggested. We want your ideas if you have any.
Uh, I talked to one, uh, resident of Ferndale who said, when we were growing up, if we were going to Nine Mile, we said, we're going to the nine. And I thought, ooh, that's cool. So that's my recommendation. You don't have to use that one. But there are all of these different areas that can use, uh, names. So if you're good about that sort of thing, um, chip in with a name or six, and, uh, we're naming the districts. More than that, we're finishing the Nine Mile District between Coolidge and Ferndale. Uh, people said, well, it's, could be the Parks District. We've got like, uh, a trailhead, Too Many Parks, and a linear park coming in. It could be the Parks District. And it's Oak Park, that would make sense, too. Or the nine, or whatever exciting is happening. This is almost at its end. We have ordered the playground equipment for this final linear park. And you know how things are now where it's, orders are delayed and shipping is delayed and, and, uh, it's hard to get, uh, people to install it. So with fingers crossed firmly, uh, we're saying maybe in the fall, uh, that will be completed. And then we're moving on to look at Eleven Mile, which we already rezoned and got these wonderful people in who couldn't have come if we didn't rezone. We're also talking about narrowing the street and adding bike lanes and doing all kinds of fun things on Eleven Mile. Then down the road, we're looking at Coolidge and Nine Mile. And then, and then not finally, but after that, we're looking at Coolidge, uh, not, um, Nine Mile between Coolidge and Greenfield. So this is a fun time to be living in Oak Park because lots is happening, and it's happening now. And, um, the Corridor Improvement Authorities, oh, and we're getting, you know, those cute flags with sunflowers on them that say Oak Park? We're getting more of those. And, um, the warehouse district, or the Water Tower District is gonna get its own special kind. So it will be, uh, have its own identity, its own brand. And, um, I cannot believe, having come here, uh, to serve ten years ago, that all of this is happening right now. It is just fun to come to work. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, uh, I'm not sure how to follow that. But thank you, everyone, for coming out. I really appreciate the, um, time that we took to honor our, um, folks, our heroes during the pandemic time. I love for our residents to come out, um, even if they don't have, um, the best news or the best comments. I still love the interaction and that everyone is getting back and getting involved and, uh, coming to the city council meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Redner?
Madam Mayor, it's been a long day.
I got it.
I'm ready to go home and relax with a good, strong mocktail.
Councilman, Councilmember Edgar?
Thank everybody for coming out tonight. And I, although it's a little early, mark your calendars. For, um, Sunday, September twelfth, we're going to be doing a cleanup, uh, along Greenfield between nine and ten. This is slow, but we are aiming to build some momentum for community cleanup. So we're starting here, and, um, I hope to see lots of you out. I want to thank Ken for bringing a coffee shop to my neighborhood. Really excited about that. Can't wait for my Shirley Temple. So excited. And I am very glad that the city is moving forward with a COVID memorial. We lost a lot of people to COVID. I think we, I'm not sure we, we broke any records, but at the beginning of the pandemic, I think Oak Park really was at the top in terms of the, the percentage of residents that we lost to COVID. So I think it's apt that we remember them with a memorial of some kind. So all ideas are welcome, of course. And, um, thank you all for coming out.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to thank the staff and administration for, um, staying after late hours today doing this utility, uh, bill town hall. That was very important. Lot of great information that came from, um, that town hall, and I'm excited that we're doing it again. Very, very important to just get everybody on the same page on, as we do this transition with the, with the bills. I would also like to thank Ken, as my fellow council has, uh, mentioned as well, uh, with Berkeley Brewery, um, slash Oak Park Brewery. But, uh, we really appreciate you. I just, I'm really impressed with the businesses coming here to Oak Park. They're all, all the business owners that I've been meeting that are especially coming to that eleven mile area. They're all innovative, they're all smart, brilliant, um, people, progressive, uh, businesses they're, they're bringing. So that, that's really welcomed. And I think it's gonna really help our young professionals and our, our families coming into the city and wanting to stay here for a long, long time. I also would like to say, uh, last, uh, our special rec, uh, recognition. to stay here for a long, long time. I also would like to say last, our special reckoners that we recognized tonight, I really appreciate all our heroes. That was, they save lives, the city manager said. So we really appreciate you, from Forgotten Harvest to Henry Ford, to the Shell Gas Station, Value Wholesale, Advanced Chemical Concepts, Oak Park School District. We couldn't have got through this without all of these people stepping up, so we really appreciate you. And thanks. I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, everybody, for staying late and for all your work, and for coming and being interested and participating. There being no further business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.